All to the public, public comment will be allowed at the mayor's discretion. This is exclusive of items requiring a public hearing. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. As a reminder to the public and city council members alike, the city council and staff will not engage in a dialogue or debate with any speaker pertaining to any comments made. Members of the public wishing to speak must keep their comments germane or relevant to the specific agenda item before the council. Please wait to be recognized by the mayor. Remember to state your name and address for the record. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on any agenda item tonight? Not seeing anybody, Matty, where everybody online? Okay, we'll move on with the regular meeting. I need a motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion to have a second.
Oh, second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll call for vote. Ty?
Aye.
Vicky?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Vernon? Passes five oh. Well, now, item number two. Ordinance nine forty-eight authorizing the levy of special assessments of Greyhawk at Prairie Gardens' fourth and fifth plot project. And ordinance nine fifty, authorizing issuance of special obligation improvement district revenue bonds series twenty twenty-five. At Prairie Gardens' fourth and fifth plot.
Thank you, Mayor. Matty Bowden, Deputy City Administrator. On Zoom tonight, we have the city's bond counsel, Mitch Walter from Gilmore and Bell. He's going to present this item for consideration. There are two action items that are requested regarding this item. Mitch, if you wouldn't mind unmuting and presenting this item, we would appreciate it.
There we go. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Matty. Yes, so this development is the next phase for this developer who has previously developed, you know, phase one, phase two, and phase three of the Prairie Gardens or the Greyhawk at Prairie Gardens. The business terms of the bond issue are fairly, almost substantially similar to the previous issues in that each lot is going to be assessed the amount of six hundred dollars per year. Those assessments will go towards the payment of the special obligation bond. The bonds are issued to pay a portion of the cost of the developer in the project. The remaining balance of the costs are just paid for out of pocket by the developer. The first step would be the ordinance levying the assessments on the parcels in the amount of six hundred dollars per year over the term of the assessments for a term of twenty years. The second would be the ordinance actually authorizing the issuance of the bonds and executing the necessary documents for the issuance of the bonds, principally the indenture and other closing certificates. The property owners, that's Mr. Riley and another developer, have submitted a waiver, basically consenting to the levy of assessments, the waiver of the prepayment period of the assessments, and the notice of the assessments, all under state law. So upon acceptance of the waiver which was submitted today, the city is able to move directly to the ordinance actually assessing the properties without providing for notice and hearing as would otherwise be required.
Mayor, that concludes city staff's comments on this item. We also do have the applicant in the audience, Mr. Riley, as well, and we'd be happy to answer any questions of this governing body.
I need two separate motions. I need the first one first, please, on the one oh five, one seventy-eight.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance nine forty-eight authorizing a levy of special assessments of lots one oh five to one seventy-eight of Greyhawk at Prairie Gardens' fourth and fifth plot.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
My motion is second. I'll call for a vote. Sherry?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Vernon?
Aye.
Vicky?
Aye.
Ty?
Aye.
Passes five oh, come in. Then I need a second motion for the next one, nine fifty.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance nine fifty authorizing issuance of special obligation improvement district revenue bonds series twenty twenty-five at Greyhawk at Prairie Gardens' fourth and fifth plot project.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
My motion is second. I'll call for a vote. Ben?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Vernon?
Aye.
Hi?
Aye.
Vicky?
Aye.
Passes five oh. Move on to item number three, twenty twenty-five citizens satisfaction survey results.
Thank you, Mayor. Bear with me as I get some display settings set on my side. Okay. Again, Matty Bowden, Deputy City Administrator, incredibly excited to share the results of the community survey that was commissioned by this governing body. Just as a reminder, we had initially wanted to do this at the end of twenty twenty-four, but because of the election and what ETC Institute has categorized as kind of junk mail fatigue, we wanted to make sure that we got the most amount of responses possible. So we commissioned the survey at the beginning of the year. Leslie and I, our city administrator, Leslie Riverola and I, will be happy to answer questions. We also have present online Jason Marado from the ETC Institute. He's the Vice President and Director of Community Research. So he's happy and available to answer any technical questions as well. Every member of the governing body has a printed copy of the community survey results at their seat. This is a little bit of a lengthy presentation. We'll try to get through it as quickly but as thoroughly as possible. So first and foremost, we just want to say thank you to the city of Baser residents who completed the survey. We did have really great responses, and the results of the survey are very valuable to the city. We know that city residents' time is very important and valuable to them, and we appreciate them taking the time. As I said earlier, ETC Institute is the firm that the city commissioned to help us with this survey. They are a national leader in market research, particularly for city and county governments. They have surveyed more than five million homes in over a thousand cities since twenty ten. So they are incredibly experienced, and we're very lucky they're regional to the metro. So we're very lucky to have them so close. As I stated earlier, during the winter of twenty twenty-five, we started the survey initiative, and the purpose was for the residents of the city of Baser to be able to provide feedback about the service quality and overall performance of the city. This is the second survey that the city has done of this manner since twenty nineteen. So a lot of the information that you'll see in this presentation will be benchmarked against the twenty nineteen results. A five-page survey was mailed to every household in the city of Baser. Included in the survey was a preposted envelope. Also, there was an option to fill that out online. Just in case maybe something got lost in the mail, we also included it in places like the city's website, on our e-news, on our social media page, and our Baser Quarterly newsletter, so that folks could reach out to us and say, hey, I didn't get my survey, and we could help them through that process. So the goal was to receive at least two hundred and fifty completed surveys. We exceeded that goal. We received three hundred and three responses. The survey has a ninety-five percent level of confidence, which means if this survey were to be repeated over and over and over again, there's a ninety-five percent chance that we would get the same results, which is a very high level of confidence for a survey. The map to the right that you can see is a representation of the survey responses that we received. So you can see the red dots. We received a very good representation and response from the overall city. We just wanted to say the bottom line up front. The results of the survey were incredibly positive. Respondents have a very positive perception of the city. Eighty-seven percent were very satisfied or satisfied with the overall quality of life in Baser, and that represents an increase of five percent from twenty nineteen. Any increase of five percent or more is considered very significant. You're going to see some very high percentage increases in this presentation. So I want to make sure that you keep that five percent number in mind. Satisfaction with city services is much higher in Baser than it is in the regional average and the national average, and we'll talk about that in more depth in the presentation. Our top priorities for capital improvement are very similar to what we saw in twenty nineteen. Reconstruction of city streets, new sidewalks and trail extensions, and upgrading our parks. Our top priorities for service areas for the survey are public safety, code enforcement, maintenance services, and parks and recreation. And those two items, capital improvement and priorities for service areas, we'll talk more in depth later on in the presentation. So as I mentioned, an increase in satisfaction from twenty nineteen to current of five percent or more is categorized as significant. So to call those categories out, I put a little confetti icon on the screen. So if you see a confetti icon on the screen, that means in that particular area, we increased in satisfaction from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-five by more than five percent, which is certainly something worth celebrating. So the first slide is satisfaction with overall perception. You can see in the dark blue is twenty twenty-five, and the light blue is twenty nineteen. So you could see overall quality of life in Baser increased by five percent. Overall condition of housing in your neighborhood increased slightly. Overall quality of city services increased significantly, and overall quality of the city parks also improved significantly by twenty percent. That's a very significant increase. Overall image of the city increased. Effectiveness of city communication with public increased. Overall quality of sewer utilities stayed the same. How well is the city planning new development increased by a very significant percentage? That's a very big jump. And value received for city tax dollars and fees also increased by a significant amount. And remember, anything over five percent is what ETC would categorize as significant. Satisfaction with public safety. Although we don't see as many confettis on this screen, you have to remember when in twenty nineteen, when this survey was conducted, the satisfaction rates with public safety were already very high. And so even though you don't see as many confettis on the screen, that's because they already performed well in twenty nineteen. So there wasn't as much opportunity for improvement from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-five. So those two areas that they increased by more than five percent is overall feeling of safety in your neighborhood and overall quality of local police protection. Perception of safety increased in two of the categories, but decreased slightly in two of the categories. You'll see that in the top two categories, how safe do residents feel in their neighborhood? Even though on the screen it doesn't show that we improved significantly, we outrank the regional and national average by a significant amount, and I'll make sure to touch on that later on in the presentation. Satisfaction with code enforcement. The two areas that we increased the most is enforcing the mowing and trimming of commercial property and enforcing the maintenance of rental properties in your neighborhood. And of course, you know, we just hired a code enforcement program coordinator. He's been with us for less than a year. We certainly knew that this was an opportunity for improvement for the city, but certainly several of those categories increased by a few percentage points, which is still something to celebrate. Satisfaction with city maintenance. We had several categories. Increase in satisfaction from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-five. Significant increase in the maintenance of city buildings, twenty-four percent. Overall cleanliness of city streets and other public areas. Snow removal was increased significantly. Mowing and trimming along city streets, parks, and other public areas. Overall flow of traffic and congestion management increased, and maintenance of curbs and sidewalks increased by a significant percentage. And again, a lot of those categories on the screen, even though they don't have a confetti next to them, they still increase in satisfaction, which again is still something to celebrate. This slide shows the satisfaction with communication, and you can see that we increased by more than five percent in every single category. The content of the e-newsletter, the quality of the city's website, the availability of information about city programs and services, how user-friendly is the city's website? How do you feel about the city's efforts to keep you informed about local issues? That's a huge percentage jump. How open is the city to public involvement and input from residents also increased by a significant amount? Now, since twenty nineteen, we've instituted several communication efforts. We've enhanced social media. So we asked them, asked our residents, how do you receive information from the city? And particularly, we wanted to see how the Baser Quarterly was performing. Certainly, printing and mailing all of those Baser Quarterlies is a costly endeavor for the city, and we wanted to make sure that that investment was well worth it to our residents. And you can see on the screen that it is. Number one, we're not surprised that most of our folks get their information on social media. We're very proud to be very active on social media, respond to comments even on evenings and weekends, and we're glad that our residents feel informed by the information that we're putting out. And then the second is Baser Quarterly. So that was something that we didn't have in twenty nineteen, but folks are saying that those are the top two places that they receive information. Nextdoor and Ring and Leavenworth Times are the two areas that they said were not their primary sources of information about the city. And since twenty nineteen, we had a change in trash and recycling provider. We switched from Waste Management to Brothers, and we think that their performance is well represented on the screen. The satisfaction with the use of standardized trash and recycling carts increased by twenty percent. Quality of recycling collection increased by seventeen percent. Overall quality of solid waste and recycling collection services increased by thirteen percent, and quality of trash collection increased by nine percent. And again, the quality of special pickup services also increased by three percent. Satisfaction with wastewater utilities. We had a significant increase in the quality of our sewer services, and then we did have increase across the board. They were just increased by four percent or less, so still increase in satisfaction. So we're doing well in that area. Here's another screen where we, in every category, we increase by five percent or more. Satisfaction with parks and recreation. Maintenance of city's parks increased by eleven percent. The amount of city park space increased by twenty-two percent. That is very significant. Walking and biking trails in the city increased by thirty-three percent. Park amenities increased by twenty-one percent. So again, in some of these categories, we're quadrupling the five percent, like, hey, we're going to celebrate that it's five percent because that's significant. I mean, these numbers are just absolutely incredible. So we wanted to highlight the top areas that we improved from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-five. So these are the top areas. Thirty-three percent increase in satisfaction with walking and biking trails. Twenty-four percent increase in satisfaction with maintenance of city buildings. Twenty-four percent increase in satisfaction with the city's effort to inform residents about local issues. Twenty-two percent increase in satisfaction with the amount of city park space and twenty-one percent increase in satisfaction with how well the city is planning for new development. Those are very, very strong numbers. In the beginning of the presentation, I touched on that we rank higher both for the regional average and the national average in a lot of the areas. So in the thirty-nine, or I'm sorry, in the forty areas that we were rated by our residents, thirty-nine of them were above the regional average. Not only were we above the regional average in those categories, but we exceeded the regional average by more than five percent. Same at the national average level. And thirty-nine out of the forty categories, we ranked not only at or above the national average, but we exceeded that national average by five percent or more in thirty-nine out of the forty categories. The one category that we did not is the adequacy of city street lighting, which was just installed on one hundred and fifty fifth. So we definitely know that streetlights are very important to the community, and we're sorry about those delays that were out of our control, but they're up and they look beautiful, and hopefully in the next survey, we'll get good remarks in that category. So here are the top rated areas above the regional average. We wanted to highlight those because remember those categories that we talked about that already performed well in twenty nineteen? So looking between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-five, you don't really see a significant increase. But how do those percentages rate against the regional average today? So these are the areas that we, as a city, rate above the national average in these categories. Thirty-eight percent above the regional average in satisfaction with Baser as a place to live. Thirty-six percent above the regional average in satisfaction with the quality of recycling collection. Thirty-four percent above the regional average in perception of safety in neighborhoods at night. Thirty-four percent above the regional average in satisfaction with the maintenance of city buildings. And thirty-three percent above the regional average in satisfaction with the overall quality of police services. So when they look at the region and the regional average, our satisfaction rates outpace the regional average by the percentages that you see on the screen. And again, anything over five, above five percent is significant. So what about the national average? Where are our top-rated areas above the national average? We're thirty-nine percent above the national average in satisfaction with a place as, who we are as a place to live. Thirty-seven percent above the nation in satisfaction with the overall quality of police services. Thirty-three percent above the nation in satisfaction with the effectiveness of city communication. Thirty-one percent above the nation in perception of safety in neighborhoods at night. And thirty percent above the national average in satisfaction with the quality of city services. So what's next? The survey included a lot of information about how we're doing today, but we also included questions about, okay, where are we going? What sort of priorities do you want to see? So we asked the question, which three of the following capital improvements do you think are most important for the continued success of Baser? These three are very similar to what we saw in twenty nineteen. Streets, new sidewalks and trails, park upgrades. I know some folks might see that and think, oh, why? We've improved so much on those things. They're not saying that they're dissatisfied with the progress that the city has made thus far. They're just saying, these things are still important to me and my family. So I don't want anybody to be discouraged or think that this means that we're not doing well in these areas. This just means you are doing really well in these areas. We like what you're doing, and we want to see more. And then which two capital projects do you think are most important to fund? First and foremost is the reconstruction of neighborhood streets without curbs and drainage. I don't think anybody on this dais is surprised with that response, and that's certainly something that we're working on. Second is construction of a community center, and that's something that we've discussed as a group and received feedback from this governing body over the last several years, and certainly will be a discussion point in the future. The ETC Institute does what they call an important satisfaction analysis, and they essentially ask, they do a matrix that says, okay, of all the service areas, which are you least satisfied with and which is most important to you? So the city can have area of focus for service areas on improvement. Now, I say least satisfied. You just saw our numbers. Our numbers are incredibly high. So these numbers are not saying that they're dissatisfied with the services. It's just saying that these are most important for service areas for the residents. So over the next two years, residents would like to see improvements made in the city's overall efforts to prevent crime, cleanup of litter and debris, several bullets about streets, maintenance of neighborhood streets, maintenance of major streets, adequacy of city street lighting, quality and timeliness of street rebuilding, and then finally, park amenities and walking and biking trails in the city. Again, the numbers are not saying that these service areas are not performing well. They're just saying that these are incredibly important, and of the levels of satisfaction, these had the lowest numbers of the levels of satisfaction, but they're not low levels of satisfaction, if that makes sense. We did include a question about sales tax, a new sales tax, just to get some additional data. Certainly, this city did a special election a few years ago, and that was an effort that did not pass, although the vote was very close. Of how supportive would you be of approving a new sales tax if it were allocated for the following areas? The dark blue is indicated that they would be very supportive, and the gray is somewhat supportive. We're not intending to have an in-depth discussion about this tonight. This is certainly something that we'll probably discuss at the governing body retreat, but this is certainly valuable information as we continue those discussions moving forward. I wanted to include this slide. This just shows graphically how we rate against the, in the United States average. So Baser is in the dark blue. The regional average is in the light blue, and then gray is the United States. And you could see in every one of those, what we consider major categories, we outpace the averages by a significant percentage. Now, I know it's really difficult sometimes, right? When we hear really negative feedback on social media, when we hear really negative feedback from community members, it's really hard to kind of separate that from a statistically valid survey, right? And certainly, people feel very comfortable voicing their opinions on social media, and that's great. But the city has no way to discern whether or not those people giving feedback to the city live here, use our services, those sorts of things. So the value of having a statistically valid survey of the residents of the city of Baser is so that we can use this information for many years to come. So I hope that this governing body is incredibly proud of the numbers in this report, and certainly, this is a very good reminder that the voice of some does not represent the voice of all, and that overall, the residents of this community, the property taxpayers of this community are very satisfied with the direction of the city. They're very satisfied with the direction that we're headed. We're, they're very satisfied with the services that we're providing, and we'll continue to improve upon those things. Finally, on behalf of city staff, we just want to say thank you to the mayor and city council. Without your vision and leadership, none of this would be possible. And it's just amazing to see in the survey results just how much we've improved in twenty nineteen and really excited about what happens in the next five to six years for Baser. And then lastly, we'd like to again thank the residents of Baser who took the time to fill out the survey. This information will be used for many years to come throughout our budget cycle, and we just appreciate them taking the time. Mayor, that concludes our presentation from the city staff, and we'd be happy to stand for questions.
Anybody have any questions?
No. No questions, but my gosh, Matty, what a tremendous display of information. You can have a survey, but how do you translate that information and make sense out of all of it? And most important, use it constructively, because this is just a snapshot. But when you look at the distribution of where the surveys come from, that's a good distribution for our city. And input, positive or negative, is input, and things that we have to take seriously. And thank you so much for being so well-presented and making sense out of things. Thank you.
No, I don't. No, I'd say thank you, Matty. You did a great job of presenting that. I very much take these surveys seriously. I'd see them as a roadmap for the direction we need to go. I think the percentage increases are because, to me, that just says we listen, right? We took the prior survey that they said lifted what the people stated they wanted us to accomplish, and we accomplished those things, and they rewarded us through the survey to say, good job. This is, you listened to us. You did it. Thank you very much. Now we have new marching orders, and we'll continue that. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, well, I was on council in twenty nineteen when we started and did the first survey. And it amazes me just to look around and see where we are. I mean, we're sitting in this new building, got a beautiful park out here full of kids, you know, new roads, new lights. Also, you know, the police safety, which is always important to me. And, you know, I believe at our luncheon that we had a week ago at Falcon Lakes, we talked about, we're ranked top three in the state, I believe, for safety, so that's remarkable. You know, I know one of the things, you know, that would help is commercial growth. So I know, you know, we're looking to try and go there, get some commercial growth to help instead of just houses. One of the things I did notice was we were lower ranked on roads, and, you know, that kind of leads back to no mill rate increases for the city since twenty eighteen. So we're living within the budget that we have. So we went from a five-year road plan to a ten-year road plan. So unfortunately, that has slowed down our progress on the roads. Although I think fairly soon here, we're getting ready to start, what, one hundred and fifty-fifth, one hundred and fifty-eighth in parallel? So all of that will be, you know, new construction going there. So all of that'll be, you know, new construction going there. Um, and of course, um, I was I was glad to see that sales tax question come back because I know that was something we really struggled with. You know, how do we, how do we make those road improvements happen sooner? Um, you know, how do we get that community building here sooner? Obviously, we saw those ranked really high. Um, and I know it was a close vote last time. And um, you know, so because it didn't pass, we've, you know, again, we've had to go back to living without that that mill rate increase. But continue to get grants, which, you know, you guys are very successful with the grant writing, which has really helped. So um, yeah, so this was really interesting to me. Um, great job. I really appreciate it. And um, it's good to see what the citizens like and what they want for this next vision of this next cycle that we can start working on.
Thank you.
Outstanding outstanding job, Maddie, um, doing this presentation. You know, I'm a scientist by trade, so I'm going to ask some scientist-type questions, okay? When they talk about the national average. Did the data was a national average on cities that are our size? Or was it cities of all sizes? That national average, did it talk about cities that were growing as fast as Baser or cities that have been established? When we, no, I'm I'm.
Please, please.
When we look at at parks. Prior to our park being expanded out, uh, ci- city park being expanded, essentially doubled. We hadn't had any park constructions until after. Twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four. That's pretty late in the cycle. So my question would be this. If we did that survey in twenty twenty-four, would we have got those same results? And my my response would be, no, because the parks were not there. So people are seeing, you know, what's going on now. I'm just asking for apples to be compared with apples. And oranges to be compared with oranges because it's so easy to go ahead and say, we did this, we did that, we're here, we're there. But if we don't know what kind of cities they were compared with. If we don't know what kind of population growth were there, if we didn't know what existing uh amenities were there prior to. Then it's. It's a report that shows positivity, but it doesn't give me the meat that I need to be able to say, hey. Yeah, I agree. If I moved to Baser within the last year and a half, I'd be amazed. But as as the mayor said a few weeks ago, we did more in these last two years than we did in the last seventeen.
That's a great question, Councilmember Fields, and I definitely appreciate the question. Jason, uh, if you're still with us uh from E T C, if you wouldn't mind answering Councilmember Field's question. Related to um the aver- national average and what cities were used in that national average if. Um, population was a contemplation in that metric.
Sure, yeah, thanks for your question. That that's a great question. The, so the national average is based on communities of all sizes. Um, the source of that benchmarking data is that every one, two years. E T C Institute conducts a survey with about ten thousand randomly selected residents from all across the country. Um, and that's our four cities of all different sizes. So that's what the national average is, is residents all across the country. We selected a random to survey. And then the regional average is those in the states of Kansas and Missouri as well as surrounding states. So that's really more of a midwestern average. Um, we certainly could go back and compare your results to smaller uh smaller cities to see how those results turn out. Um, we have, you know, the the ability to do that. Um, but for this report, it was just based on on national and regional averages for cities of all sizes.
Reason I ask that is that uh I was stationed in Denver, stationed in Los Angeles. Uh, lived in major cities, and if we're comparing ourselves to those major cities. Then we're not really getting a real accurate picture because it's harder for New York City to. To do what we did in the last two years. It's harder for Denver and Los Angeles and Phoenix, you know, and San Antonio to do that, places that I've been. Uh, been having to work at. So I just wanted to know because if it is the smaller communities, then yes, we're we're. We're right on target, but but to compare us to. Cities of that nature, that's not very good.
Yeah, that's great feedback. Thank you, Councilmember Fields. We will work with E T C to extrapolate that data and make sure that we have. Um, one national average comparison and then a national average of small cities of a similar size to us. Yeah, thank you.
And that's a, that's a valid point. Think the most important thing is looking at our percentages of all. I mean, without even comparing to any kind of national average. That to me is just like an added bonus to be able to look at that. And we translate our percentages and our growth. And then make our plan forward.
Thank you.
Great job, Maddie. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Move on to item number four, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero four, a resolution approving amendments. In additions to the city of Baser fee permits.
Hey, Mayor Council, Jim Sherman, planning zoning director. This kind of began back not long after I began work here. I solicited some of the um experience Diana, our permit tag, who. Had some years about um fees because of my experience, and I think I may have mentioned this when we did the planning and zoning fees a couple of months ago. It's healthy every so often to to perform these reviews. Harvard Business School did a study about inflation and city fees. A few years ago, I was able to help with and and provide some data when I was up in Council Bluffs. And um they recommend every uh two to three years because of. The what you you start sliding backwards on your staff, you know, for insurance benefits. And so you're not collecting the fees. So that's where we come up with that three to five years is that was one of some of their direction. So at some advice from uh Leslie and Maddie, I began going a overall comprehensive in the building code fees. And of course, we've had in recently, the one of the things that came out was we don't have some fees even selected still. Such we didn't have like a working without a permit fee. We had no fees addressing pools. We were just kind of just lumping them into the general valuation category. Um, every jurisdiction I've ever worked, we have something that dresses mud on the streets. Um, because that occupies quite a bit of staff time. It doesn't just the building staff. Uh, this great gentleman here, staff here too, um, is occupied. So we were not recouping any. Uh, fees for oh, a good three, four hours a week here just recently. So finishing a comprehensive review, the what you see on the the fourth page in in red. Would be um the new adjusted fees. Um, the only one that was existing that we really adjusted was Dex. Because at twenty-six dollars, that didn't even cover one hour of a field visit. And so we do usually three trips and a plan interview. So we were. Significant, and I also did kind of a peer review around the region and we were, we were well below in those categories. So. Um, with that, we proposed adding these new fees and adjusting and breaking them up to be them, to be a little more comprehensive too. Because when I met the comment about pools, we were just lumping them into a valuation category. Well, it doesn't cost. My services, three, four hundred dollars to do a uh an above-ground pool. Or an in-ground pool at six hundred dollars. That we were a little, we weren't overcharging, but. The value wasn't there for our service. So that's why we decided to break it into above and below ground, in-ground pools. Um, and then thanks to help with our counselor, we we came up with the penalty fee for working without a permit. And then maintaining that structure without um complying with whatever order was issued. And so those are the kind of the overall summation and I will stand for any questions tonight.
Anybody have any questions for Jim?
No.
No, just thanks for taking the time to, you know, look at other communities and make sure we're up to date.
No. Jim, great job. Appreciate it.
Um, Mr. Mayor, then um I would move to approve a resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh four. A resolution approving amendments in additions to the city of Baser fee permit schedule.
Have a motion to have a second?
All second.
Motion second, also, Ricky.
Hi.
Vernon.
Hi.
Ben.
Hi.
Jerry.
Hi.
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 Passes five oh. Move on to city administration staff reports. Chief, I'll start with you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity. Um, just a couple of things. Lieutenant Martin just completed a three-week-long man-level school. He finished very highly class. Super proud of that. Um, he can have his team work hard to build the new position, or the old position that. Maybe a lot of times. We are also continuing to meet with vendors as we try to satisfy the requirements for a JAG. Actually, that's not true. Not a JAG grant, it's federal, it's federal grant. But he could potentially not only change, but will assist how we view the ultimate prime elements in the city. So uh, I think he's gonna live on that, but the vendors are slowly coming in and the grant can work. We're working with Senator Moran and his group. So I'm super excited that that continues to move forward.
Thank you, Chief. Gene?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, the American Municipal Service. Uh, it's the time of the year on the sewer side. We're making adjustments back to the. Spring temperatures of slowly as well as uh lift stations. Um, so I've been busy last couple of weeks on that. Uh, guys seem like they were chasing. Street signs breaking off during the high winds last week as well as doing a bunch of potholes. Uh, staff did uh some online trainings. Uh, got some certificates for additional equipment to operate. And uh you all approved this evening in the consent agenda. The revised uh crosswalk and one the evening or parkway. We was able to go out with our equipment, coal playing the old thermal off the roadways for the old crosswalks. Um, we did receive the recommended new signage, got all that placed. And was able to tank the new continental-style crosswalk doors so it can leave and go south. Just to the intersection, you will see the new crosswalks, all the new signage and everything in according to what you were this evening. Thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, me too. Just so it, you don't have to be um looking the other way to see that we've broken ground at the Fairway Store. Um, and we're moving quite fast at the high school right now too. Um, if you go along parallel, so those two uh projects have uh have hit us pretty hard and we're we're motoring along. We have quite a few more developments to start. Bring into council for final plats. So we're, we're pretty excited.
Thank you. Maddie?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, we are in the middle of our financial audit um with B T and Co. They will be onsite next week. Um, so staff is busy um fulfilling their requests. They'll be onsite. Um, typically when they're onsite, they ask for additional documents. Um, they uh typically interview the mayor, the city administrator and I as part of their process. So we're excited to host them in in our new facility. That'll be the first time that their staff has been onsite. Um, and then the streetlights on a hundred and fifty-fifth street are officially installed. And like Jean had mentioned, um, our city staff went through uh some additional training so that we could operate our boom lift to be able to install our banners. Uh, that we ordered. So we're really excited to see the street with the streetlights and also the banners installed. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, I have a couple of quick items for you. Tis construction season. So in addition to all of the private development happening, um, you have likely seen a growing pile of dirt down towards the. Uh, end of a hundred and fifty-eighth street or the north end of a hundred and fifty-eighth street. Um, that is not dirt related to the civic campus pond. That's actually dirt that's being excavated for the. Civic campus trails. So that work is um officially kicking off. So that's exciting. Uh, you have also likely seen work starting at the Baser Civic Campus Pond. We are um finishing repairs to the pond. Uh, so that is actively under construction. Uh, one hundred and fifty-eighth in parallel will likely be getting under construction sometime within the next, I'd say. Sixty to ninety days. Um, we have not yet had our um pre-construction meeting for that project. But we expect that that will happen at any time. Um, Baser City Park Trail, so that is another project that was grant-funded, as you recall, and you know, the um. Positive or sometimes difficult thing to also track with these. Grants is that you receive these grants a couple of years prior to the actual work beginning and so. It's easy to lose track of what projects are happening when. Um, but we actually opened bids at City Hall yesterday for the Baser City Park Trail. And um, I mean, what a great and what a great environment. We had eleven. Um, responses to that bid package and we ended up with a what appears to be apparent low bid that met. It, and again, we're doing due diligence on that, but um looks to be close to a hundred thousand dollars under the engineer's estimate. So very favorable. Um, bid on that project. So again, we'll be working on a notice to proceed to get that moving. That item does not have to come back to City Council and then. Uh, we are heavy underway with improvements at Field of Dreams. So as you are all well aware, we have a new operator at the Field of Dreams and as we've been working through that transition, there have been some erosion. Issues that needed addressed. There have been some field maintenance issues that needed to be addressed and then. We had a couple of things that popped up with some of the concrete, some electrical concerns. Um, and then ultimately the concession stand so that it could be permitted so um for food cells. So. Uh, we can't wait to showcase the before and after pictures of those improvements in the coming months. But I think those will be wrapped up within the next thirty days as well. So. We are busy, 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 um, but all I think all really awesome stuff and hopefully things that the community will love. The other thing that I would ask the governing body to start thinking about, and we certainly do not have to do this tonight, but. Uh, spring is here and so calendars fill up quickly. We do really need to find a governing body retreat date. That will work for everyone's calendar. So again, we certainly don't have to do that in this meeting, but. Uh, we will either need to do it in this meeting or start expecting to get phone calls from Kathy. Or someone from City Hall to try to find a date and time that will work for everyone's schedule.
I think we'll go ahead and just talk about it right now.
Okay, well, Mayor, we'll start with your calendar.
Are you talking about? May or eight?
Mayor, typically it's um late in April, early in May. We we fluctuated between the two depending on availability. Um, as staff, we'd like to maybe shoot for end of April, but we certainly recognize calendars fill up.
Well, so are you looking at like the week of the twentieth? Twenty-first?
Yeah, I'm I'm thinking maybe the the week of the twenty-eighth, April twenty-eighth or the week of May fifth. One, any day on on those two weeks, maybe.
Weekday?
We, yes, we do weekdays and they're typically during the day. Yeah. And they're typically full day.
We don't want to do it the first because that's our.
Basers blooming. Yeah, we definitely, May first is out. Yep.
May eighth won't work for me.
Do what?
May eighth won't work for me.
Okay.
But any other day that week or the week before. Last week and April, I don't.
What about April twenty-fifth?
I'm busy with Baser blooming at that point.
Yeah, how about Friday, April twenty-fifth?
April twenty-fifth?
That way we have the week of April twenty-eighth for. Basers blooming.
I'm I'm free that day, so.
Works for me.
My wife is scheduled for surgery on the twenty-fourth, so depending on how that surgery go.
Okay.
Uh, I'm in Salt Lake City, but I can try to rearrange and push back to Thursday night.
How would we feel about a Tuesday? I mean, we could try to do Tuesday, April twenty-second.
Tuesday work.
Okay.
Fridays and Thursdays are much better.
I know I'm scheduled to be in Florida on the seventeenth. And I'll try to get back up here in time for the twenty-second. April is just kind of a.
Well, what, May second or ninth?
Yeah, how about May second?
Yeah, we could look after Baser's blooming. Yeah, we could do it the day after Baser's blooming.
Be kind of sad to some pre guests.
I said Tuesday, Thursday, uh, Friday is best for him. Tuesdays are just dying.
I'm good on the second.
The eighth or the ninth?
Second, eighth, ninth, fifteenth, sixteenth, twenty-third, I'm good.
How about Friday, May ninth?
Good there?
Good there?
What's Mother's Day?
No.
It's the eleventh.
The eleventh.
Okay, everybody remind me on the ninth.
Okay, everybody remind me on the ninth.
You didn't have your shopping done before, didn't you, Will?
Put that in our calendar when you send it out.
Okay, so Friday, May ninth, we will send a calendar hold for everyone. And um we'll start generating some draft topics. And of course, as we have done in the past, if you have draft topics that you would like to have considered, please send them to either Kathy, really probably to send them to Maddie, Kathy and myself. And then we'll send a list of everything that we've received, including whatever items staff kind of has as our standing items, which, as you know, are the budget and any other policy items related to the budget that we've heard throughout the year. Um, and we will circulate that um at a meeting so that we can say, okay, is this the right list of topics?
The thing, we did it together here.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Because that would have gotten weird if Kathy had to call you seven times.
May the ninth.
And we've typically started.
VH, VFW?
Yeah, so we'll call and see if they're available. If not, we'll find another alternate space. But um we'll block everybody's calendars. We typically start at nine. And as you know, we like to try to be wrapped up by three at the latest. Because we realize it's a long day, lunch included, so. Okay, thank you. That concludes everything that I have, Mayor, for my items. Thank you, unless anybody has questions.
Tom, do you have anything?
No, you guys are doing fine. I would just uh note for anybody who's tuned in with the legislature that uh there's a a bill now that's kind of causing a little stress for municipalities. It's called CCR two one two five. It would uh again modify the way the budgeting process works for cities. It will substantially increase the amount of work you'd have to do to justify an increase in your budget. Uh, you already, you're, I think, just getting used to if, because I am still um the revenue neutral rate thing, they're adding even more, including an election requirement if you increase over a certain amount. So uh the league's on it and obviously they're looking for any help they can get to try to stop that and uh at least keep it the way it is now so that uh you guys have a little bit of flexibility in increasing taxes.
Thank you very much. Did anybody have any questions for Leslie? I kind of missed that one there. Okay, uh go on with Castle Mayor Reports, Ben will start with you.
I do not have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry?
Yeah, um, when I was looking at everything, I know we had a lot of stuff that got moved because of weather that we still haven't had. But um let's see, March eleventh, um I went to the mayor's state of the city address. It was excellent. Uh, and then today, uh met with the Chamber of Commerce and just um, you know, discussed uh ways the city can work with them and help businesses in town grow. And then um before we leave, after everybody's given their report, um I do have an item of consideration that I would like to bring up.
Um, the Port Authority has been very, very busy. Um, we authorized uh Golden Shovel, a company that does similar type surveys that ETC does to uh collect data, collect data on Port Authority having its own mill levy. Now, the money that we spent, the thirty thousand dollars that we spent for Golden Shovel is for them to make a presentation at all four major cities here in in uh Lebonwa County. The county commissioners were in support of us doing that, so um look forward for that to happen at some point. So the question is, what does the Port Authority do? A lot of the questions, a lot of the things in the survey, you know, are also things that Port Authority tends to focus on. One nice thing about Basar, and I didn't say this earlier, but I'm gonna say it now, we had a tabula rasa. We had a clean slate. We had land that was open that we can just kind of go in and build because it was nothing built there before. Port Authority is looking at the same type of situation, looking at large tracts of land that can be purchased for uh commer- for industrial slash commercial uh properties. Uh, we know as 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 my esteemed colleague to my to my left had said, we need to look at trying to build that that uh that base that comes from the tax, the tax base that comes from commercial and industrial um property. So that's what that presentation is going to be about. The county is on is on board with it by providing their support. Uh, we do have a little, we have some money in the Port Authority that we are uh out uh uh trying to gather gather data. Uh, and at some point, you'll see something that will be coming out about the Port Authority having a mill levy that's always been authorized, has never been initiated. Now, the money is for the Port Authority again is to purchase land for commercial slash industrial um property uh buildings. Um, so we'll see how that happens. We saw, we saw how Johnson County did theirs. And you saw Johnson County took a certain piece of land and converted it to commercial slash industrial. And you can see the revenue that that Johnson County and I mean Lenexa and Overland Park and all these other cities. We don't know where the land is going to come from. There is a land search committee that the uh Port Authority has and they're out looking for large sections of land. Now, every city has its has its unique characteristic. Basar has always been identified as a uh kind of bedroom community. So I don't, from my interaction with the Port Authority and the land search committee, they are not looking at large tracts of land here in Basar, but they are looking at large tracts of land throughout the county. So expect that to happen at some time in the near future. That's it.
No, not anything. Nikki?
Um, I've had several um recent life experiences that makes me challenge and look at my focus. And I only say something because I think it relates to the city, too. Because we interact with people and how we interact is very important. And I think putting into focus what is important and remembering life is a gift. You've got to take advantage of every day. You need, don't waste time by being negative. Work on some positive constructive interactions and take time to help somebody else and put a smile on somebody else's face. And when there's tough decisions to be made, do it in a thoughtful, respectful, constructive interchange. Because when you do that, the best possible plans can be made. And I say that because I believe our city takes steps every day to do that. And I applaud all the work that's going on. I'm proud of being a part of the city because you really do keep that in mind. And we try to as we are working together. So sometimes to me, it's important to take time to say that and to say thank you, too. Birthday coming up, April twenty sixth. We'd love to have everybody participating in one way or another and do a spring clean for the city. And I'm so excited because there's there's so much teaming going on. And that's always a lot of fun. So at the high school, from nine to eleven, Saturday, April twenty sixth, there's a signup genius. There are nineteen streets listed. We already have eleven out of nineteen covered. That's fifty-eight percent of them, and we're early now, so. And it's okay, if we get them all all covered, there are still places that we could go to. And everybody participating, be there by nine because at nine ten, we're going to take a whole group picture. And it would be great to see a tremendous size of group. And um, again, I forgot to say it in terms of the city, but kudos to the city, all of you for your constructive way of dealing with things, handling things and the quality of work that you do, whether we're working on the streets, the parks, the playgrounds, whatever. I think it shows it makes a difference to our community, so thank you.
Moving on to Mayor's Report, the only thing I want to say is thank you to Leslie and Maddie and all the staff. The state of the city was probably the smoothest thing that we've done since I've been mayor. Uh, everything went good, great communication. You guys have everything organized extremely well, so I appreciate that. Um, that's all I have right now. So do we have a need for an executive session?
We do not tonight, Mayor.
Okay, um, I need a motion to.
I think you had council members standing for the that had one item.
Sure, you can go ahead.
So um, Mayor and Council, um I have an item that I wanted to bring forward for consideration tonight or consideration in a couple of weeks. Um, if you guys want to think about it, need some time to reflect a little longer. Um, this this item has been on my heart and my thoughts for over a year now. And it has not subsided. So tonight, I wanted to bring forward a request that we consider a moment of silent prayer after the Pledge of Allegiance at each of our future council meetings. Um, I checked with other counties and cities and found that they're doing this. And I also checked with federal and Kansas State Law. And in fact, I'll read a little of the information that I've done some research on. And I'm glad to share this with anybody that wants the information. But um in twenty fourteen, the US Supreme Court directly addressed the issue of prayer at governmental meetings for the first time since Marsh, which is one of the cases. In a five-four decision, the court ruled not only that municipal or county bodies may host prayer at meetings, but that such prayers can be pervasively sectarian, e.g., for example, Christian in nature. Yes, it is legal in Kansas to have a silent prayer before city council meetings. As the US Supreme Court has ruled that opening local government meetings with a prayer, including a silent one, does not violate the Establishment Clause of the Constitution, allowing for the practice in Kansas as well. Um, some key points to remember, Supreme Court President, the case Town of Grease versus Galloway, established that legislative prayer at the local level is permissible. And a non-coercive nature, a silent prayer is considered non-coercive, meaning that no one is forced to participate. So um I just wanted to bring that up this evening. Um, if anybody's got comments, questions or anything, um I just wanted to bring that up as something that um that I I feel strongly about, and I just wanted to bring it forward to see if it'd be an opportunity that we might want to start doing that here at the city of Basar.
I do, I just needed consensus from, it's nothing we have to vote on, but I'll need a consensus. Whether you guys want to do it tonight, you want to go ahead and tell us how your view on it, you know, tonight or wait a couple of weeks?
Is that something we could do, like at our workshop? Is that?
I would hesitate to to, I think what uh Councilwoman Stanford said is correct about the state of the law. The the background, though, is that this is considered part of an invocation for a legislative body uh doing its work. I think that's always the limitation it's been under, so that the idea being is that in your official capacity during a official city meeting, that an invocation of that type would be allowed in the manner that was discussed. They also allow an actual uh stated prayer or invocation is how it's termed. Um, so you obviously, the moment of silence is approved for that kind of purpose. So I'm saying that the only thing that is a limitation probably is is i- if you're not talking about a a situation where you're doing invocation type thing for a formal city meeting, you might be talking about another nuance of the law that would require further examination.
I remember about ten years ago, this came up also. The current mayor wanted to have a specific religious organization come in and do the prayer. And I resisted that because it needs to be something that is open to everybody. Uh, in the bureau, I was allowed to do a moment of silence every morning. Didn't have, I could not include the words amen or thank you or whatever, and it was just a moment of silence. Moment of silence is over, and we get to work. So so if we move forward with this, my objection is going to be no amens, no whatever, you know, a a specific religion uses, just a pure moment of silence and then move into the business.
Ben?
I don't have any problem with uh, I don't have any problem with a moment of silence.
Uh, I would probably say, Sherry, I'd kind of just like, I hadn't even really considered. I'd like to think about this a couple of weeks. And not from a personal standpoint, but just from a view of the city and our constituents and the citizens and so just give me some time to just kind of dwell.
No, absolutely. Yeah, that's why I I said.
And I would ask. If we're going to discuss it, you might want to just look for more research and make for sure we have some pretty good guidelines so we don't, we don't get out there.
I have done research on this before, um, pretty extensively. So I'm, I think it's safe to say at this time, again, with the Town of Grease case was key in this, that if we're talking about the moment of silence at a city meeting like this, then it's perfectly acceptable and would almost certainly pass constitutional muster. Uh, Councilmember Fields brought up some points, and that's usually where you get into your uh areas of litigation is when you choose some some forms of sectarian prayer. They allow it, it is even allowed at that level, you know, to do some very specific things. But uh, this just, the the moment of silence just takes that variable out of the equation. So I can say to to you guys now, my opinion is is that if you're discussing a moment of silence before an official city meeting, I believe it is constitutional and appropriate. And it's only your guys' policy decision at this point as to what you would want to do.
Tom, Tom. Uh, being the Department of Justice, I had to run it up the line, had to run it up the channel to make sure that the moment of silence was intended for one thing and one thing only. And that was to get us focused for the work we're getting ready to do. And the rest of it was, it's done, let's move forward. So I do appreciate what you're saying.
Thank you.
Nikki? Are you, were you done, Tom? Sorry.
Yeah.
If I'm being straightforward, I am extremely um respectful of a religious aspect, a meditative aspect, absolutely. But for me, if I'm presenting my two cents worth, I would be saying I want to keep it separate. I, I think our meetings are purposeful, they're well presented, and I do not see that need. And that's just me.
While we uh is, let's see, in two weeks, is that going to be enough time for you to think about it, Tom? Yeah, okay, while while we talk about it at the next meeting, then uh, actually, I think we ought to make it on a um the agenda and just to discuss it then, and then we can either approve it or deny it. It depends on what the council wants to do.
Mayor, would you like it on the regular agenda or would you like it on um the work session? Again, from a staff perspective.
Work session.
Okay, just from a staff perspective, this doesn't require like a formal vote. It's really, again, it's a policy decision of of this body. You can add it, rescind it, at your, at your pleasure.
That way, we don't have to, we do it on the work session, then we can discuss it more, so is that okay with everybody?
Yeah. And thank you, Sherry, for presenting.
Yeah, well, it's it's something um that I've I've um wanted to talk about. that I've, I've um wanted to talk about for about a year and and it hasn't subsided. And um I just felt it was the time to bring it forward.
Yeah.
I need a uh motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to adjourn.
I've done a motion to have a second, second. Motion, second, everybody in favor, say aye.
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 We'll go right on into the work session agenda, discussion regarding updating the Municipal Equipment Reserve Fund MRF to be Municipal Maintenance and Equipment Reserve Fund, M M R F, and the charging of MRF fee for city projects.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a li- a little bit about the history of the MRF. Um, and again, as we go through the budget process, we're continually looking at the funds that we have, making sure that those funds that are established are serving the city um for its intended purposes and setting this uh the city up for success in the future. So uh the city does currently have a Municipal Equipment Reserve Fund or MRF for short, as the mayor just um noted. It was established back in nineteen ninety-one, and the fund was designed to uh be used as a financing mechanism uh for the replacement of equipment for the city. Um, and over time, of course, things have, a lot of things have changed since nineteen ninety-one. And over time, uh city staff, uh we observed the utilization of the of the current MRF, and it just wasn't fitting the city's needs for its intended purpose. And so the city since twenty twenty-one has been using the Capital Improvement Fund and of course, our formal capital improvement plan for the replacement of such equipment. And when we look at the maintenance of all the things that we are building, our city hall, our new parks and trails, the maintenance of that is really sort of an undercurrent to all the city's budget priorities of twenty twenty-five. If you look at every priority that's on the screen, the maintenance piece affects every single one. And most especially, the the fact that we have not proposed a property tax increase in the last several years. So if we're going to be planning for the maintenance of these um large capital investments that the city has done, the time to start planning for that is when the project is constructed and not down the road when we have something to replace. So um the city administrator and I have uh been looking at researching options and ideas on how we can, as a city, prepare uh for the maintenance expenses of certain items like uh this facility, um roadway repairs, you know, all those sorts of things. And so when we look at what we were doing with the MRF and um uh the way that we kind of changed everything over to the Capital Improvement Fund, we have a recommendation and an idea, and we wanted to run that past this governing body. Um, first, we would recommend um changing um the MRF to also include maintenance expenses. Historically, it was just for the replacement of equipment, but we think maintenance activity is just as important as um equipment replacement. It's it's great to have nice new equipment, but it's also equally nice uh to make sure that we have the proper funds to be able to maintain our facilities. Um, so we would recommend repurposing it to, instead of the Municipal Equipment Reserve Fund, to be the Municipal Maintenance and Equipment Replacement Fund, also the MRF, just an extra M on the front. So that's nice for for naming conventions. Um, and so it's not just enough to have a fund for maintenance. We have to put processes in place to prepare for those things. Like I said, the time for planning for maintenance is not when we see cracks on our trails. It's when the trail is built. That's when we need to start forecasting and saving for those sorts of maintenance activities. Because if we want to maintain these facilities in good working condition, we have to make sure we're planning for the appropriate maintenance and not waiting for five years down the road, ten years down the road. You know, when we look at what's happening at the county with their courthouse, um they are in a really uh difficult position as an organization about what they're going to do with that facility. And as a result, they had to increase their mill rate this past year. We want to get ahead of that. Um, and certainly, other organizations are doing things like they'll charge themselves a, anytime they do a big public uh project, they'll charge themselves a certain fee, and they'll allocate that towards public art. Well, Leslie and I, as we were preparing for the budget, we thought, well, why don't we do something like that, but it's a maintenance fee? So for every project that we do moving forward, we're going to charge the city itself a certain percentage and allocate those dollars for future maintenance activities to make sure that we're adequately preparing for those things. So we're not in a situation where we're ten years down the road and uh an increase of mill rate has to be considered because we didn't adequately prepare for the maintenance expenses of of everything that we're building. So we we propose those two things. First, repurposing the MRF to the MRF, right, just adding maintenance. And instead of being a a reserve fund, it would be a replacement fund. So as as large expenses, repl- um renovation expenses, replacement, um improvements, those sorts of things, we would be able to use those dollars for those purposes. For example, out here at um our nice new playground, we know in twelve to fifteen years, that rubberized surfacing is going to need to be replaced. The time to start thinking about that is today. It's not when we get the complaints ten, fifteen years down the road that it needs to be replaced. So building that into our process now is just going to be that much more beneficial to us in the future. So the two recommendations that we'd like to receive feedback from uh the council this evening is first, the ordinance to update the MRF to the MRF with an extra M. And then second is a resolution outlining the parameters of what that MRF fee would look like. Uh, Leslie and I have put together some ideas. We bounced those ideas off of our city attorney, Todd Luckman. Um, and we'd like to come back with um those parameters for presentation and consideration at the next meeting. Um, that concludes our presentation, Mayor, and I'd be happy to stand for questions.
First of all, I think it's a great idea. Uh, you have to plan ahead, especially as our city grows. But um anybody else have anything they want to say right now?
I I would say, could we put, if we were to look at these separately, the extra double M, MRF, if that could go on consent agenda, unless, obviously, that would be my recommendation on that. Obviously, you need to see on the second one some recommendations of what those would look like, but I think that's a great idea, absolutely. Being proactive instead of reactive is exactly the things that we're looking for from city staff is identifying gaps. And this is something that would be a gap, and we, I definitely welcome.
Thank you.
Just from a procedural perspective, you're asking for the ordinance update.
Well, I'm asking for feedback tonight about um if the governing body would entertain or request staff to draft an ordinance for consideration at the next council meeting to repurpose the current MRF to the MRF with the extra M uh focusing on maintenance.
So it's an ordinance, which means it cannot go on consent.
I I believe an ordinance can go on consent, but. Yes, yes, it can go on consent.
And I'm okay with the ordinance going on consent.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, the ordinance is fine because the action's taking place after, so.
Yep.
Yeah. It's.
I applaud this. I mean, to me, that's forward-thinking by the city. And I'm going to step forward and probably shouldn't say this, but I'm going to say it anyway. That's one of the things we go to the Y. And that's one of the points I've been trying to make to them. If you don't keep up with what you've got, you've got a mess going on. And it's not fun trying to clean it up. So I appreciate the stop.
Thank you. So if it's acceptable to the governing body and to the mayor, we'll come back with a prepared ordinance and a consultation with our city attorney on the consent agenda and a resolution outlining the suggested parameters of the MRF for consideration on the regular meeting agenda.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Uh, need a motion to adjourn the work session. So, and voting in favor, say aye.
Aye.